I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. On our agenda, I'd need to remove item two from the consent agenda, so I consider a motion with that amendment.
I would so move, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any public comment? All right. Shami, call the roll.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Then I would consider a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any public comment on this agenda item? All right. If not, Shami, call the roll.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
All right, regular business. Before we go to regular business, I just need a short executive session under SDCL 125, two, sub one, and four. Can I get a motion to that effect?
I may move for executive session under those.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second by Commissioner Aaronz. Shami, call the roll.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Thank you. Shami, call the roll.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
All right, regular business. Item one on our agenda. Brad?
Good morning, Brad.
My name's Adam Walsh. I'm the chair of Harrisburg Economic Development Corporation. I want to talk to you guys a little bit about our Rhodes Task Force here. Also with me today are some stakeholders from our group, Sum Metro Growth Alliance, Jesse Fonkert, Chad with Stockwell, Tim Graff, the superintendent of schools for Harrisburg, Mayor Derek Wink, and Brad Meyer, board member for HEDC. Go to the next page here. As you can see, this is a Rhodes Task Force kind of committee structure we have set up to have representatives from HEDC, SMGA, the school district. Joel Aaronz has joined us on a few meetings for the county commission, Stockwell, and city council, and city representation. So we started this in Harrisburg a few years ago as we looked at improving safety areas, less congestion, and opportunities for growth and development around our infrastructure in Harrisburg, hoping that with that, we can have safer places for our kids to travel as they go to school, ease of getting to work in recreational areas in Harrisburg, and improving sidewalks and pedestrian crossings. So this, these two graphics were taken from the Lincoln County Master Transportation Plan, which was completed back here in 2019. As you can see, the map on the left shows the traffic volumes for the corridors, and what we're really going to be talking about today is the Willow Street corridor. If you can see that, that's this kind of red corridor here. And flip that over to the next item here. The image on the right shows the, the traffic crashes along that corridor from 2012 to 2018. So that was studied here a few years ago, and after, after this study was released, the stakeholders in Harrisburg got together to discuss some of the, the concerns on safety and student safety. And in May 2022, our Rhodes Task Force was, was started to start looking at safety of our, of our transportation. So with that, we want to provide safer roads to our citizens and visitors. We want increased economic growth opportunities and less congestions and improved traffic flow. And then last year, we started what's called the Heart of Harrisburg Initiative that we presented to this group on economic development for, for the community. And some of our five-year strategies include developing a business park, job creation through business attraction, retention, and expansion, workforce development with the Harrisburg School District, downtown redevelopment and supporting community initiatives. And I just have a brief video to show you guys here. My name's Adam Walsh. I am the chair of the Harrisburg Economic Development Corporation. A couple of years ago, we started an initiative called Heart of Harrisburg that really is an investment vehicle for bringing new growth, new jobs to our community. I think what's appealing for us most about Harrisburg is the small-town feel, just a lot of opportunities to be involved here is where you might get swallowed up in a bigger city. Right now, Harrisburg still does have that clean slate, and we can paint the future of how we want it to look.
This is a vibrant community. They're committed to high quality of life.
Opportunities. It's opportunities, whether it be the school district for kids, or there be the business community that's available for people to, to look at because of the growth that, that is taking place and has been for a number of years and will continue.
Someone is looking at Harrisburg for the home as like a residence or home for a business, I would tell them that Harrisburg is a great place to call home.
All right. So that's just kind of a taste of what we've been working on for the Heart of Harrisburg Initiative here the last few months, some, some marketing, and really, I think what's summed up in there is growth and opportunity. So as we continue to look at growth in, in the community, these are the numbers from the building permit valuations over the last few years. So you see 2019 and 2020 were consecutive record years, followed by 2021, and then 2022, we hit just about $90 million in total construction value of our building permits, and number of permits almost doubled year over year. A lot of that's attributed to some of the roofing permits that were pulled to fix through the storm damage. But as you can see, each year, if you looked back at 2019 compared to 2022, that, that doubled in four years, and we continue to see grow, growth in, in development and growth in housing in our, in our area. A lot of that growth can be attributed to the school district. As, as Harrisburg has grown, so has the, the school district, and each time a school district is planted, whether it's in South Sioux Falls or in, in Harrisburg, you see development happen around it. So this is, these are just some of the numbers that comprise of the Willow Street corridor, as you can see. Safe routes to school are a primary concern. So Harrisburg High School has about 1,600 students, Liberty just under 600, South Middle School just under 700. So all those numbers attribute to about 3,700 current learners along that corridor, or that use that corridor for their commute, including about 340 staff that, that use that or a portion of that as their primary route to school. And the numbers in parentheses there are the, the growth that's expected as students continue to fill those schools before a new school is built on the south side of Cliff, which is planned for 2023 to get started here. So an additional about 400 more students that will continue to use those schools in that corridor. So when we got together with our stakeholders, we looked at this corridor, and, and right now, the, the city is planning the Cliff and Willow Street roundabout. Construction will start this spring on that, and we looked to the west, that western area, west of Minnesota Avenue that the county currently owns is the kind of primaries, priority segment, one that we have identified as, as opportunity to make that a safer corridor. Again, if you remember that slide with the number of crashes along the corridor, this is a, one of the ones that see quite a few in the year. So the study is prioritized in segments with this first phase being that corridor on Willow from Minnesota Avenue to 480th Street here in T, which is right here, if you see here. So it's not, it doesn't go all the way to this Heritage Parkway. So we're currently talking to the city of T to see if they're interested in joining us along this study. And we don't have a financial ask today of Lincoln County, but we'd ask the county to continue to participate and support us, and at some point, come alongside us here to be part of this study as we look to kind of finalize what, what the implications are here. Our plan for funding hasn't been identified yet, although we expect kind of a request for federal dollars through a, kind of a congressional approval process, and that would be coming in months to come. We're still in the early stages of the study with Stockwell here, but as you can see, Prior Street One would be the, the first phase of this, kind of the, the city to the interstate. And knowing that, that overpass along exit 71 was currently identified for like a 2028 potential reconstruction, we just want to make sure we're planning far enough ahead to meet certain timelines, knowing that this would be a, a big undertaking here. So with that, I appreciate you guys' time and consideration, and I'll take any questions that you have.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Adam, you said phase one was from the interstate to the city?
It, it would be from Minnesota to 480th Street, which is this street right here. I think in this diagram, it goes to Heritage Parkway. It would really be, it would cross the interstate to the west. That way, T can participate in the study as well.
Can I ask a tough question?
Yes.
What kind of participation would you like to see the county have?
Really just your stamp of approval and your name on the, the document. So when we go to the federal delegation, it's noted that this is, covers multiple jurisdictions, right? The city of T, the city of Harrisburg. It connects two state highways, highway 115 and highway 11, and then also connects us to the border to Iowa. So this is a very, very important corridor, and might be one of the biggest infrastructure projects in the city's history. So knowing its importance, we just, like I said, want you guys alongside us for that support.
Commissioner Poppins, you remember, we did sign with T for them to get their particular grants to do their foreman.
Their Tiger grant, yep. Hopefully, there's funding similar to that for this.
Yeah. So there has precedent, so that should be no problem.
Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt.
Yeah, you want to come, you want to come on up, Derek?
It's not really a, a study per se. I mean, Harrisburg, we are paying for everything all the way over to T currently to have it all, so that we can take it to the, the senators and up in the federal levels to present it to them, so we have a good number of what we're, what we're looking at, so.
What, what have you, what have you expended thus so far?
Ah, I think, I, we really don't have a, a hard number, but we approved up to like $280,000 for the design of it, so. I mean, that's something that the city is paying for, and we're not, we're not asking for any, any money from the county or the city of T at this point.
All right.
Any other questions for me?
I don't. Anybody else have questions for Mayor?
Well, with the popular, with the growth, I was talking to our superintendent, you're going to have to do something because the cars continue to pile up and the length of time and potential for accidents. And I think those, the study, if you go back to that one slide you had, the number of accidents that have appeared on there, I mean, it's been lucky that there hasn't been any serious ones where there's been a loss of life or something, but.
This, this really kind of took off when Dune came down to Harrisburg to watch the Pire football game, and I got to meet, have a little meeting with him before the football game, and the first words out of his mouth was, what the heck is up with this road from the interstate to Harrisburg? And I tapped him on the shoulder, and I said, yeah, what can we do about that? So he just kind of pushed us in the right direction.
Great.
Adam, there's been a, Adam, there's been a lot of discussion about, or some discussion this morning about doing the engineering and, or the pre-engineering part of it to, to make the grant ready to submit to the feds. Can, can you speak to the importance of that issue and how that works?
Yeah. What I would say before, we'd want to bring it forth to the state or the, the federal government to consider, we want to make sure we have kind of all of our ducks in a row. They want kind of the full package before you would submit to them. That way, they can make that decision more or less on the spot, right? So that's something that we wanted to get further along. Like I said, this might not be the, the only presentation we have to this group as we continue with our, with our idea here. And right now, the, we haven't been able to progress with the, kind of the soil bearings or anything yet, just with the, the weather we've had this year. But the study will continue to progress here. I think April is kind of the next timeline of when we'd be seeing some more progress. So here shortly, I think we'd maybe even have an update, whether it's spring or into the summer for you guys, so.
Adam, are, are you guys expecting to have that completed by the end of this calendar year?
I believe it's a 2024 completion of this study. Does that sound right, Chan? So it'd be a, a 2024 completion date?
Yeah, thank you. I think it's a tremendous economic development effort to be able to connect the south side of the Sioux Falls metropolitan area to the state of Iowa, and could have tremendous benefit for the Lake Alvin, Spring Creek area as well. I know that's further down the, down the, down the road, but that area is growing and developing as well, and to be able to build that out would be just increase our ability to handle traffic in that area. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Aaronz. Yeah, and I would just make a point, too. When we originally looked at this, it was thought of that we could just study kind of Minnesota to the interstate, but again, knowing that this corridor really implicates west of the interstate and all the way to the Iowa border, it was determined that we want to kind of take the full, full thing on, especially knowing that Iowa border in that corridor between Lake Alvin and the park system is going to be a, a big priority as that area grows. You look at the connection to kind of highway 11 and the accessibility to, into Iowa for that, that's going to be an important corridor for our future as well.
All right. Thank you, Adam. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, commissioners, any more questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me have Tom Grimmond. There he is. Good morning, Tom.
Good morning. Tom Grimmond from Call Your Securities. So I'm just here to kind of report a little bit about the sale of the bonds and let you know how things are going. Currently, the, the closing for the bond issue is, is April 14th, so final documents will be coming out for you to sign and for the state's attorney to sign. So that's, that's coming along. So just a little, I just, if I got a few minutes, I thought I'd give some background. Do we have the Elmo? So just a little history here. I don't know if they can zoom in on this or not, but, there you go. So you can see, this is, when we first started this, this was, this was option three, as you can see, that was put out by TEGRA. The, the amount was $53.3 million. And then the resolution, well, let's see, $53.3 million, and then I'll go to this one here. So with that in mind, $53.3 million, we saw, this is option three, we saw that the levy, the average levy dollar per thousand was going to be about 31.2 cents per thousand. So that's what was presented to all the, basically to all the public meetings that we were out looking at with the different options. So that's the, some of the background. And then we sold the bonds, so we sold, we sold the $54.8 million, as you can see on this. You can see the, where's my pen at? We got the 54, 54.8, that was the par amount to the bonds. The structure, the structure of the bond issue was such that buyers of bonds right now are, are buying what they call premium bonds. So you have a, you have a premium structure where you have 5% coupons, but your yields, which you guys pay, is in the yield column. Well, someone's paying you for that additional yield of 5%. So actually, when you, when you pay back $54.8 million, you end up getting almost $58 million in proceeds. So you can see that the bond reoffering premium is, is $3.1 million, which produces that $57.9. You take out the costs, so you end up with, I'll come back down here. After you figure in the capitalized interest fund of 1.7, and that is going to make your first interest payment in December, that has to be figured in because there was no levy that was put in place last year for collections this year, but you're still going to have to make some kind of bond payment. So what we ended up doing was pushing principal down out of the first year, which would have been December 1 of 2023, and just had an interest payment, and that's what the interest payment is. So that basically, you have to borrow the funds to make that first interest payment of 1.7 million. But what's left over then is you have $55.6 million in construction funds of the 54.8. And then, so how does that affect? So basically, staying at the $54 million, you see that basically the levy ranges from 3.9, 3, or .319 to 3.2. I, I did an average down here at the bottom where your levy is about 32 cents per thousand. So it is, it is right in line with what was, you know, given to the public, give or take 0.08 cents, or .8 cents. So that was, I guess what I'm kind of reporting on today. The sale went, actually went really well. I was pleasantly surprised. The sale, you know, there was a lot of people interested in the bonds. We were oversold in many maturities, which allowed us to actually price it down, actually price it up, because you raise the price and that drives the yield down a little bit. So we were able to actually lower the yield on some of the maturities that we initially went out with. So, so anyway, I was really, really happy, I think, with the, with the overall pricing of the issue and, and the results that we ended up getting.
Anybody have any questions for Tom?
Tom?
Yes.
Just to clarify, so this first year, we'll have to pay 1.7 million on the bonds?
That is correct.
And then, I know that we've had a lot of discussions about, you know, dynamic pricing and factoring in growth. What will the payment be for the years thereafter then?
Well, the, the payments do grow, and they're set up to grow for the next 10 years at 2%.
Okay.
And that's, and again, I, that's what was, again, we tried to stay within the parameters that were put out during those meetings with the, with the public, and that, that was figured into that. I don't think that was ever not talked about, that 2% growth.
Right. So it's a 2.2% increase on 1.7 for the next 10 years?
Well, no, that's just the, the interest only.
Okay.
What, what we had looked at before was you had your, basically, you're making a $3 million payment that first year, and then it grows from there. But it only grows, and again, I, we might not have said this again, it only grew, we only grew it out to 10 years, I believe.
Right.
So it's 10 years on a 30, 30, or 30-year financing, so that it levels off after 30, or after 10 years. So then, if you continue to grow past that, or if somehow you missed your growth, kind of growth projection within that 10-year period, there is a period to catch up. That's always the, that's always the crux when you put some kind of growth number in there. Well, if you miss it and you're growing it for the whole term, then you can, it's hard to catch up, right? You never catch up. So you stop growing it after a certain period of time, and I think we picked 10. I'm not even sure that was conveyed to the public. I think we just told them it was going to be 2% growth, and I think most of them thought it was going to be 2% for 30 years. I don't know. But, but it's only 2% through 10.
Thank you.
Tom, or Sherry? What happens when this courthouse is paid off? Sherry, when's that? When do we pay this courthouse? Two years? Does that affect the payment back? That doesn't have anything to do with anything.
Well, I mean, the.
Well, I, you know, for a simple math, for me, I'm paying X amount of dollars to pay this off. I no longer have to pay that.
Right.
Right? So therefore, I don't have as much of an impact on my budget, but I do have for a justice center.
Right. And, and, and that was not, that, that was not taken into account, you know, because we didn't structure this around existing debt.
Right.
It was just the 2%.
How many years we got left on the highway shop?
Probably 16, like.
Yeah, I think that was done in 16, right? 16. So it was 20-year paper, so 30, 36 is probably the final maturity on that.
Okay.
So 14 years, 13 years.
So the thing I'm saying is that in the long run, over a longer period of time, Tom, we have two expenditures. One, this building, two, the highway shop.
Yep.
Which will affect our budget from the standpoint of no payments.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. You are correct.
All right.
All right. Thanks, Tom.
You bet. Thank you.
But any other public input on this agenda item? All right. If not, I'm going to apologize because I now have all this stuff up here because the courts have overtaken our commission chambers. So there's a phone up here that was just here this morning that keeps ringing, so.
If you take it off the hook, why it keep ringing?
Well, then it's probably just going to make some loud, annoying noise. So I'm not going to touch it, but that's what that ringing is. It's not my cellphone. All right. We're going to go ahead and move on to our public hearings. First one is for an on-off sale malt beverage license.
This is a public hearing to consider an application for retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license on the following described premises to it. Prosper County Warehouse and Event Hall, Platteau, tract 3A of Poppinca's Edition in the southwest quarter of section 28 Township 99, range 51, west of the 5th Principal Meridian, Lincoln County, South Dakota. The parcel is a new split at 099-5128-B3A0. The applicant is present to speak.
All right. The applicant want to come on up?
She's not negotiating today.
Not this morning. I apologize. My name's Alexandra McLouth, and I am the owner of Prosper Country Warehouse and Event Hall. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah. Does anybody have any questions? All right. Is there anyone here to speak either for or against this application? All right. If not, go ahead and consider a motion.
Just a question, Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Just for the record, did we have our sheriff go back? Because usually, we do some background checks. Nothing wrong, but I mean, that's just the procedure. Do you know if we did that?
The, the procedure for the, the applicant has followed what we normally do for a new applicant for an alcoholic beverage license.
Okay.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second. I do have a question, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Discussion? Go ahead.
Just clarif, this is the new one that's getting built out by Lennox, correct?
Yes.
Is, what's the regulation on a proposed site for applying? Do they have a certain period of time to be up and running or not? No? No idea?
Mm-mm.
Okay. So.
It'll be before June, and very, very soon, so.
Okay. It's just that the structure isn't up, and I didn't know if there's a regulation on that or not.
That's a good question. All right. If there are no other questions, any public input on this agenda item? All right. Go ahead and call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Then we'll just move right into our next public hearing.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. This is a huge end piece.
You want to hand her for the record your daughter's name?
Do you want to say Marie? My name's Marie. She does everything with me. So our next public hearing is the same location, but wine and cider license.
I'll do that one, too. I'm so sorry.
It is what it is, so I know you don't have a lot to say about it.
No, no, no. You're fine.
Is there anything else you want to say about the second license? No? Okay. Is there anyone here to speak either in favor of or against the application? All right. If not, commissioners, any questions?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Shami, call the roll.
Commissioner Aaronz?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
.1 million dollars, which produces that 57.9. You take out the costs. So you end up with. I'll come back down here. After you figure in the capitalized interest fund of 1.7, and that is going to make your first interest payment in December. That has to be figured in because there was no levy that was put in place last year for collections this year. But you're still going to have to make some kind of bond payment. So what we ended up doing was pushing principal down out of the first year, which would have been December 1 of 2023, and just had an interest payment. And that's what the interest payment is. So that basically, you have to borrow the funds to make that first interest payment of 1.7 million. But what's left over then is you have 55.6 million dollars in construction funds of the 54.8. And then, so how does that affect? So basically, staying at the 54 million dollars, you see that basically the levy ranges from 3.9, or .319 to 3.2. I did an average down here at the bottom where your levy is about 32 cents per thousand. So it is, it is right in line with what was, you know, given to the public, give or take 0.08 cents. Or .8 cents. So that was, I guess, what I'm kind of reporting on today. The sale went, actually went really well. I was pleasantly surprised. The sale, you know, there was a lot of people interested in the bonds. We were oversold in many maturities, which allowed us to actually price it down, actually price it up because you raise the price and that drives the yield down a little bit. So we were able to actually lower the yield on some of the maturities that we initially went out with. So, so anyway, I was really, really happy, I think, with the, with the overall pricing of the issue and the results that we ended up getting.
Anybody have any questions for Tom?
Tom?
Yes.
Just to clarify.
Question.
So this first year, we'll have to pay 1.7 million on the bonds?
That is correct.
And then, I know that we've had a lot of discussions about, you know, dynamic pricing and factoring in growth. What will the payment be for the years thereafter then?
Well, the, the payments do grow, and they're set up to grow for the next 10 years at 2%.
Okay.
And that's, and again, that's what was, again, we tried to stay within the parameters that were put out during those meetings with the, with the public. And that, that was figured into that. That, I don't think that was ever not talked about, that 2% growth.
Right, so it's a 2.2% increase on 1.7 for the next 10 years?
Well, no, that's just the interest only.
Okay.
What, what we had looked at before was you had your, basically, you're making a $3 million payment that first year, and then it grows from there. But it only grows, and again, we might not have said this again. It only grew, we only grew it out to 10 years, I believe.
Right.
So it's 10 years on a 30, 30, or 30-year financing so that it levels off after 30, or after 10 years. So then, if you continue to grow past that, or if somehow you missed your growth, kind of growth projection within that 10-year period, there is a period to catch up. That's always the, that's always the crux when you put some kind of growth number in there. Well, if you miss it and you're growing it for the whole term, then you can, it's hard to catch up, right? You never catch up. So you stop growing it after a certain period of time, and I think we picked 10. I'm not even sure that was conveyed to the public. I think we just told them it was going to be 2% growth, and I think most of them thought it was going to be 2% for 30 years. I don't know. But, but it's only 2% through 10.
Thank you.
Tom, or Sherry? What happens when this courthouse is paid off? Sherry, when's that? When do we pay this courthouse? Two years? Does that affect the payment back? That doesn't have anything to do with anything.
Well, I mean, the-
Well, I, you know, for a simple math, for me, I'm paying X amount of dollars to pay this off. I no longer have to pay that.
Right.
Right? So therefore, I don't have as much of an impact on my budget, but I do have for a justice center.
Right. And, and, and that was not, that, that was not taken into account. You know, because we didn't structure this around existing debt.
Right.
It was just the 2%.
How many years we got left on the highway shop?
Probably 16, like.
Yeah, I think that was done in 16, right? 16, so it was 20-year paper, so 30, 36 is probably the final maturity on that.
Okay.
So 14 years, 13 years.
So the thing I'm saying is that in the long run, over a longer period of time, Tom, we have two expenditures. One, this building, two, the highway shop.
Yep.
Which will affect our budget from the standpoint of no payments.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. You are correct.
All right.
All right, thanks, Tom.
You bet.
Thank you.
But any other public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, I'm going to apologize because I now have all this stuff up here because the courts have overtaken our commission chambers. So there's a phone up here that was just here this morning that keeps ringing, so.
If you take it off the hook, will it quit ringing?
Well, then it's probably just going to make some loud annoying noise. So I'm not going to touch it, but that's what that ringing is. It's not my cellphone. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to our public hearings. First one is for an on-off sale malt beverage license.
This is a public hearing to consider an application for retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license on the following described premises to it. Prosper County Warehouse and Event Hall, Platteau, tract 3A of Popinkas Edition in the southwest quarter of section 28 Township 99, range 51, west of the 5th Principal Meridian, Lincoln County, South Dakota. The parcel is a new split at 099-5128-B3A0. The applicant is present to speak.
All right, applicant want to come up? She's not negotiating today.
Not this morning. I apologize. My name's Alexandra McLouth, and I am the owner of Prosper Country Warehouse and Event Hall. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, does anybody have any questions? All right, is there anyone here to speak either for or against this application? All right, if not, go ahead and consider a motion.
Just a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Just for the record, did we have our sheriff go back? Because usually we do some background checks. Nothing wrong, but I mean, that's just a procedure. Do you know if we did that?
The, the procedure for the, the applicant has followed what we normally do for a new applicant for an alcoholic beverage license.
Okay.
All right, can I get a motion to approve? Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second, I do have a question.
Thank you, discussion, go ahead.
Just clarify, this is the new one that's getting built out by Lennox, correct?
Yes.
Is, what's the regulation on a proposed site for applying? Do they have a certain period of time to be up and running? Or not? No, no idea? Okay, so.
It'll be before June, very, very soon, so.
Okay, it's just that the structure isn't up, and I didn't know if there's a
Yep.
regulation on that or not.
That's a good question.
All right, if there are no other questions, any public input on this agenda item? All right, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Then we'll just move right into our next public hearing.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. This is a huge end piece.
So you want to hand her for the record your daughter's name?
Do you want to say Marie? My name's Marie. She does everything with me.
So our next public hearing is the same location, but wine and cider license. It is what it is, so I know you don't have a lot to say about it.
No, no, you're fine.
Is there anything else you want to say about the second license? No, okay. Is there anyone here to speak either in favor of or against the application? All right, if not, commissioners, any questions?
Move to approve.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you again, I appreciate it so much. Say bye.
All right, I've got. Do we want, do we want to do executive session? Or do we, be a good time to do it? Okay, can I get a motion to go into executive session under SDCL 125-2 sub 3?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to come out of executive session. Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon is not here. Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, we are, do you want, you want me to do those out of order? Or?
It's up to you what you want to do. If you want to go ahead and we can do it at the end of the meeting, or we can do it now.
Yeah, we can do that at the end. We can get some of this other stuff done. Uh, John? Good morning.
Good morning. John Romble, Building Superintendent. I guess first thing is the auto scrubber.
I'm sorry, what? Oh, the auto scrubber?
Yep. As you've seen, I have two quotes. I will tell you that I, I did have a couple, each of those two companies quoted a little more expensive machine. I just didn't include those because I wouldn't have considered those anyway. But yes, I, it, I would recommend that we go with the cheaper quote from Prochem Dynamics for $8,526.95.
And then where will this, what's it for?
This will be primarily at, at Lennox.
At the fairgrounds?
Yeah.
All right. Anybody want to make a motion on this?
I would so move.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, anybody have questions? Any public input on this agenda item? Nope, okay. Oh, phone's ringing again. Can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Poppins?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Madam Chair, with that, I'm going to depart and head to Deadwood.
All right, thanks.
Have a safe. Thank you. Just for the record, it's for FAA meeting for the airport.
Drive safe.
Yep.
Under the speed limit.
All right, item six on our agenda.
So as we've talked about a few times, we have the one property that the county now owns by the T Airport, and it's a house that's kind of been deemed, well, it's definitely deemed a hazard. So we'd like, I'd like to move forward to get quotes to tear it down.
All right, anybody have any questions? All right, any public input on this item? All right, is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you. Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Thank you.
But. Morning, Tracy.
Good morning. Bringing action to approve the creation of a new commission assistant position and then the transference of the commission, current commission clerk to that position.
All right. Anybody have any questions for Tracy?
No.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And then I need to not move forward with action, or item number eight, as I do not have a formal thing to bring to you today.
Okay, then we're going to skip right over that one.
Thank you.
Next on our list is a surplus. Morning, Sherry.
Morning. So I've got a tax deed property that I'd like to declare a surplus, remove from the inventory. I've got four items that I have to do under there. So we would declare surplus, appoint the appraisal committee, authorize to advertise for sealed bids of 10:00 AM, April 21st, and then, were we still wanting to set the transfer date for 30 days afterwards? We had discussed that at one point, but I don't know if that changed now, so. Yes.
So the 30-day transfer? Yes.
Okay. So and then set the date for a transfer of title one month after the word of the bid. So those four items I need to have done.
All right, so we've heard the request to declare a surplus. We need to appoint an appraisal committee. We need three people for that, Sherry?
Yep.
All right. And authorize the request for sealed bids. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
I'll, I'll second it.
I've got a motion by Commissioner Ehrens and a second by Commissioner Gibbon.
In that motion, did you want to set the three appraisers?
Yeah, who?
I'll do it.
I'll volunteer. I guess I will do that if you need three.
All right, we've got three volunteers. Awesome. I've got a motion and a second. Any public input on this? Okay, if not, Sean, may I call the roll?
And can I have some clarification on the motion? This is to declare surplus, set an appraisal committee, and authorize for sealed bids?
It is.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
So the next thing that I want to do is the South Dakota Association of County Officials sent out an email a while ago for a public surplus website to do auctions. What I'd like to do is just get your approval to do vehicles and equipment on this website. It, I've got it pulled up here so you could see what it is. Right now, we just surplus two chargers earlier on the agenda, so we're getting those set up to go on the auction. So I just need approval, or it's a blessing, I guess. But I just want to do equipment and vehicles at this point. I don't want to do land yet.
Okay. Per the request, is there a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item?
It will. What do you mean, are? Because we'll still have to advertise surplus and everything else. And then it will, then we'll just put it on here for advertising for bids. We'll advertise in the newspaper on our website, and then you'll go here to bid on it.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any public input? All right.
Yeah, I'm, I'm-
Go ahead.
I'm re, Madam Chair, I'm reading the request here from the auditor. It just says everything will stay the same, except for the only difference is it will now include an online link to this website. So basically, we're just going to do the same thing we always have.
Mm-hmm.
And we're going to add on a link to this website.
Yep.
All right, is, Sean, you want to call the roll, please?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
The next item is to establish the date for a minor boundary change for Peters' land. It's been, it went through the whole school process. It's a minor boundary change. So I'm going to establish the date of March 28th, and it will be for the 23, 22 payable, 23 tax year.
And we're just establishing the effective date?
Yeah.
And you said-
We talked about this one. This is the Peters' one with the three that got planted wrong. And they weren't ending. 23 payable, 24.
What was the effective date, Sherry?
March 28th.
I get a motion to establish the effective date for the boundary change at March 28, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
So the next item is to do refund and abatement, refund property taxes in the amount of 8286 for taxable, or for taxes payable 2177 for taxable taxes payable 22, and abate property taxes in the amount of 4,2285 for taxable taxes payable 23, totaling 5,8271. The crest was submitted by Melvin Gable on the property legally described as 329650, northeast corner, southwest. It was inaccurately annexed into the city of Beersford. So the last abatement that we're doing, we're actually going to be moving the taxes from the city of Beersford to Pleasant Township.
All right, anybody have any questions for Sherry? If not, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, I've got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? All right, if not, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
So my last item is to abate property taxes for 22 payable 23 in the amount of $4,748.62 submitted by Bentwood Place Inc. on a property legally described, parcel number 15018J100, due to the structure being removed on September 23, 2021.
Per the request, any questions? If not, is there a motion?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
Thank you, I've got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item? Any discussion? All right, Sean, may I call the roll?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
Next item, appointing a, an appraisal committee for surplus Dodge Chargers.
Yes, ma'am. So we still need to appraise our equipment before we can sell it, per South Dakota law. So I need three Lincoln County landowners to be set by you all to appraise those chargers before we can sell them on that public auction website.
All right, do we have any volunteers?
Did I hear a volunteer?
I, I think I might have heard-
I saw two volunteers.
I might have heard two in the back down there.
Two volunteers, there you go.
Okay, so we've got Betty Otten.
Yes.
And we got Chad back there. So we're going to appoint them, and then we need one more.
Should I just add, add Mark?
Sure.
He's usually here.
That's what happens when you're not here.
Yeah, add Mark, yeah. There you go.
Perfect. So can I get a motion on that, please?
So moved to include those persons.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any public discussion? Speak now or forever, hold your peace? Okay. Want to call the roll, Sean?
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
If I could please meet with, with you after the meeting? Thank you.
All right, next item. Bill?
This is a time place set for the discussion of reducing the selling price for the T property over, that was initially going to be the site for the jail that was proposed. And so that's the time for the discussion about if you're going to leave the listed price the same, if you want to reduce it. So that's what's on the agenda.
What amount was being recommended to reduce it to? Do we, do we need to make that decision? Are we just giving a general okay to reduce the listing price?
The amount that they want, the suggested amount was between $40,000 to $45,000 an acre versus, I believe it said, it's 60 right now.
Yeah.
Okay, what do we want to list it at? Commissioner Ehrens, thoughts?
I'll make a motion to approve it down to 45.
Okay, I've got a motion to change the listing price to 45,000 per acre.
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Got a motion and a second. Any public input on this agenda item?
How many acres?
Uh, how many acres was, is-
I believe it's listed as 52 right now. And that's off the top of my head, so don't hold me to it.
I've got a-
It's 44.33 acres.
Okay.
And here's the listing from Marcus Mailer.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. I've asked for public input. Any public input with that question? All right, if not, Sean, may I go ahead?
The motion is 45,000 per acre?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes. And then we need board action to appoint a commissioner to authorize routine expenses for the courthouse design and build. Do you, do you want, do you want me to do that, since I'm doing all those-
Madam Chair, I would say that the chair should do that.
Yeah, so-
And if somebody else wants to do it, that's fine.
So what Teger was asking for is they need to go out to the 20 acres that we have purchase agreement on and do a wetland study, and so we need approval from someone to do that. There's gonna be multiple surveys and other things that take place with courthouse design, and so we are gonna need to either bring them all in front of the commission for each and every one of those, or we need to designate someone um to do that from the commission to give authorization.
I think the commission would even spring for a pair of rubber boots for you to go travel, go out and look at that.
I have my own rubber boots. Oh, man.
Uh do you need, do you need a-
I need a motion.
I'm, I would move that we have our chair serve on that capacity.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Schmidt, and then did I get?
Second from Commissioner Gibbon.
From Commissioner Gibbon, I thought I heard you over here, too. Okay.
At the same time.
Okay. Um so I've got a motion and a second, any public input on this agenda item? Okay, if not, Shawnee, call the roll.
Commissioner Ehrens?
Yes.
Commissioner Gibbon?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Landine?
Yes.
You know, for the record, you could take our auditor along as well.
Yeah, I could. I will.
She's anxious to join.
It is now time for public comment on anything that's not on the agenda. Is there anybody that wants to make public comment today? All right, if not, any commissioner reports today?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanna provide some update to the public on the comprehensive plan. Listed on today's agenda is the uh open houses that we're hosting. Uh the first one's gonna be on March 29th at 6:30 in Harrisburg at Liberty Elementary, and the second one will be the next day on March 30th at 6:30 here at the courthouse. And then also, um I don't know how wide of a distribution this received, um I've had several people ask me about it, but if you go to our Lincoln County website, which is LincolnCountySD.org, you can access the comprehensive agenda survey, and you can just do that on your computer, or iPad, or phone, and you can actually just answer some pretty comprehensive questions about what people think they want the future of land use planning to look like in Lincoln County. So I encourage them to go there to, and do that and participate. Better participation gives us better understanding of how people want the comprehensive plan to look in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Ehrens, anybody else have any reports they'd like to make?
Madam Chair, next week, I'm gonna put on the agenda our participation with a, with Rock, a community action program that serves Lincoln County, and to discuss issues that have arisen within that organization, and the idea that are they able to continue to service the, with the responsibilities that these ICAP agencies have.
All right, thank you for that, anybody else?
I, I guess I'd like to congratulate Wendy Sweeter and the Raise the Roof fundraiser that they had last Saturday night for our uh Lincoln County 4H, uh seemed to be well attended, and uh I'm not sure of the exact amount of money that they raised, but I'm sure it was uh an ample amount, so uh again, congratulations to her.
Uh Commissioner Gibbon, just uh since we're discussing, you didn't bring the pie with you, did you?
I, I, the pie is consumed.
You didn't buy a dog. Like somebody else, but.
And, and I know this isn't really a, a, a local thing, but I just wanted to also mention today, as a, a, a previous uh school administrator, I, my, my heart goes out to